All right, it's three o'clock, call to order. Town Ho Chi Town Special Meeting, Board of Trustees, March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five at three P M. I guess we need to have a motion to make me, I don't remember exactly how to word it. Do we make a motion for like some thought to be um vice mayor, vice mayor, or?
Go ahead, I'll make a motion, that probably vice mayor, such or mayor's action.
Got a second? Rail call vote?
Tyler Hager?
Yes.
Ryan Gordon's not here, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brandon Walters?
Yes.
Mason Perry?
Okay, let's get going here. I guess we'll go ahead and do a rail call for Board of Trustees.
Tyler Hager?
Yes.
Ryan Gordon's not here, Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brandon Walters?
Yes.
All right, recognition of guests, lot, not many today, all right, let's go to number four. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding approval to enter into commitment in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars with viewpoint project for production and marketing materials, including television, social media, and related materials with expenditures to occur at a later date. Do we have anything to add to this, or other than what we already know?
Yeah, uh, would you guys like for me to share some of my findings over the last?
Yeah.
Share some of your findings, and then we'll, I'll, I'll say a few things too.
Okay, absolutely, so I'll start off, um, I, uh, after being, being tasked with the opportunity of this, uh, project of having a, uh, some sort of a space of a TV show for Ho Chi Town, uh, to be advertised and marketed, uh, the board showed a lot of interest in this, um, and so they had asked me to reach out to other communities, uh, that had gone through and engaged with them and had this production done for their community before in the past. And, uh, in doing so, uh, with a little bit of research, I've reached out to several communities here, uh, one that, uh, I've been able to speak with was, uh, uh, Plymouth County, California. And I spoke with Zachary Gateley, who is a grant manager, who was kind of a secondary manager of this project. Um, I couldn't speak with their primary manager of this project because she was on administrative leave, um, so there were a couple of questions that Zach, uh, couldn't, uh, answer. Is, uh, Zach shared with me kind of the following during our phone call, is that they're not sure if they would do the show again. Um, the viewpoints team had led them on to believe that Plymouth County would be one of the last shows to be aired through the PBS program. Uh, they were a little confused whenever they saw the continuation of that. Uh, Zachary's supervisor, uh, over the project has a background in running a public TV network in California. And she had mentioned to her, uh, to her staff that a couple of the things were ridiculous is that the crew, uh, was a little bit pushy overall. Uh, the day of the filming, uh, Plymouth County was still not given any contact information for the film crew. The film crew did not pay attention to Plymouth County's, uh, notes or guides on how to access their community and the destinations that they had previously discussed visiting. And the film crew got lost in the meantime, and so this kind of deducted from their total overall time that they were able to dedicate to their project. Uh, and remind you, you know, they were spending the thirty thousand dollars for an expected period of time. Um, Plymouth County, uh, had to basically cater towards the film crew through the project to meet the film crew's scheduling expectations and guidelines and deadlines. And any changes whenever they wanted. Uh, Zachary felt that this was frustrating because Plymouth was paying for the service. And, uh, they were additionally sold on the fact that there would be two prime time periods, that their, uh, little one minute advertising block would go and air on PBS and Fox Business. A five P M. block and a seven P M. block, but he wasn't sure if, number one, that this had ever actually aired during those times himself, and again, his manager was out, so there was not really any sort of an answer. But he did not recall it, and, uh, that they weren't sure if this project overall made any sort of an impact for their community. Uh, due to the nature of it being on kind of public television and on some secondary networking. Looking back, Zach felt that they would rather spend the thirty thousand on advertising in target market areas to produce a better impact directly for their community. Um, so, we contacted a couple other communities like Pittsfield, Massachusetts, uh, left the voicemail with them, Greathfield, Massachusetts, nobody had answered, didn't leave voicemail there. Lawrence County, South Carolina, uh, left the voicemail with their town administrator, didn't hear back, uh, Gardner, Massachusetts, uh, left the voicemail with their mayor, uh, Nicholson. And, uh, we did get ahold of, uh, Kingsport, Tennessee, uh, Matt Lane is their communications director who spearheaded the project. And, uh, he did kind of express that there was some confusion with the project, um, but, uh, overall, they said that their staff that they received was a third-party contractor that came to shoot the footage. And interviews with the townspeople were done via Zoom, uh, it was their first time with, uh, any sort of video production. They shared information through emails leading up to shooting the video, again, they didn't have any direct, uh, contact with the film crew themselves, and, um, they believed that, uh, they had a guarantee that, uh, their segment was aired on commercials through PBS and Fox Business specifically, and that they had used their project to attract new residents, so people moving to their communities. And again, you know, if you do do the project, you can kind of cater it towards whatever your objectives are for our community artists, and so it would obviously be, uh, tourism and attracting residents here in the community. Um, so, overall, um, me personally, uh, after reviewing the feedback from some of these municipalities that were actually involved with this project successfully, um, the concerns that were raised just kind of highlighted a couple of key issues that just don't really reflect this as being a true, like, a grand slam for Ho Chi Town. Um, and because I'm kind of a little uneasy about this situation, I can't in full confidence recommend this at this time. Now, if they want to come back to the table and they want to make some more guarantees on specifics in this project, um, and we can put those in writing, I think I'd be a little bit more comfortable with that. Um, but again, I just, I don't feel like this is a home run, and I really just wanted to share with you that I think everybody here in this community is excited to promote Ho Chi Town. We're all excited to promote what our beautiful community has to offer, but this just doesn't seem like a safe investment, a, a total win-win situation for us. It seems like there's a lot of odds and ends and potentials for Ho Chi Town to spend this thirty thousand dollars and still slip a little bit through the, the cracks. And if you take a look at the video production quality of some of these segments that they have done, they're available on YouTube, um, they don't look, um, as high quality as you would expect by investing the thirty thousand dollars. And they also claim that there's, you know, many more, uh, costs associated with this project behind the scenes that, you know, we're not covering with the thirty thousand, they're just taking that hit, is what their claim is. But if you take a look at the level of the production quality, I think that we have a lot of very capable people locally here, um, that can produce a video quality that matches, if not exceeds, uh, the quality of videos that are rendered for, uh, these projects. So if anyone has any questions, please, uh, let me know.
Thank you.
Thanks. Did anybody want, say anything before that?
I actually went out there on you two and looked at a couple of them. Wasn't impressed, I'll just, I'll just say it. Plus the fact, you know, the thirty grand upfront, uh, we've got to guarantee that for them to come, and then thirty-four hundred dollars for, for the shooting people to get here, to actually video it. If I'm reading this right, it's, we have a final sign-off and approval of all three segments, only three segments being run on TV, is that the way I'm reading this?
They just film on one day?
Yeah, it's, uh, very quick turnarounds, they come out, they film it, they, uh, they have a script that they produce, they'll send it back and forth between us and them, and then we'll approve of the script and any sort of finality that we request. Uh, they produce the video and then they shoot it out there, and, um, their, their, uh, exposure cycle is about like one year. And again, I don't know how many times in that one-year period, but he did say that it will be continued to be cycled throughout a one-year period.
Well, there's no, I mean, the thing about it is when we, when we were, you know, approached with this idea, I mean, it was exciting to think, boy, you know, this is gonna involve, uh, you know, a celebrity, and it's gonna be a potential opportunity to have a small form of a documentary, which this is not an exclusive documentary, it's a marketing package that is distributed and sold to communities and various organizations. And I could tell within five to ten minutes that he was a salesman, and, um, he was really trying to push this package, and, you know, like I said, we weren't provided any data as far as like, you know, where this is gonna be airtime, driven, if there's gonna be particular slots, what particular networks it's gonna be on, um, none of that was really given to us. It was within halfway through, and I've been in sales many years, and so, you know, I can, I can pick up on whether someone is really trying to sell you something that is, uh, legitimate and fair and something that's gonna reflect the investment. For thirty thousand dollars, there's a lot we can do. I know companies right now, and one of, I mean, Skip and Shelley could recommend this job with a thirty thousand dollar budget of producing something that we could take and distribute just in our own circle of, um, tourism. Just in, on search engine optimization of just optimizing our website and being able to attract people to our website with a phenomenal video that showcases who Ho Chi Town is. I would rather take that money and spend it in that, in that, you know, um, arena versus what I, what I witnessed with viewpoint was, was terrible. I mean, the, the, the interviews were terrible, Dennis Quaid comes on and does a, a very broad sweeping introduction, which has nothing to do with an individual community or, or company, it's just, you know, that's what he was hired to do. And so, it's kind of a bait and switch type, uh, marketing, um, that they use, and it's broad, and it's so broad, um, stroked that, you know, where we need the marketing is in Texas, and Oklahoma, and Louisiana, where the people are coming from, you know, our, 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 our key market is Texas, and so, we can't guarantee, you know, they can't guarantee us where these ads are gonna be.
I think we could work better with the Chalk House and their advertising, I believe we can do better, but we go talk M Z T A.
But, you know, we have the opportunity to reach out to any news station in Texas, uh, Louisiana, Oklahoma City, buy them and down, down here for a day. We can offer to put their crew up overnight, buy dinner, and they'll do, they'll do a story on our town and broadcast it on their station, A B C, or I don't know what network it is, but, uh, the Shreveport Station's here now in Broken Bow.
K T B S. Well, just recently, Broken Bow's, um, brought up Rick Rowe.
That, that's the same person.
And he's, and, you know, it was two, three, four years ago, five years ago, Girls Gone Lion brought up Rick Rowe.
Yeah, and he's been here before and stayed.
And his was phenomenal, yeah, I mean, his, his, his layout.
He's, he really loves Peter Sand and Ho Chi Town.
But, but the deal is, this was a great opportunity, we looked into it, we vetted it, you know, and we decided that, you know, collectively, um, at least, you know, um, with, you know, the circle that I'm listed with, including Liz, which Liz was in marketing for many years, and so, yeah, it, it just seems to be something that I feel like our money needs to be spent elsewhere. And, I mean, it was a good opportunity, we looked into it, I felt like it was gonna be impactful for Ho Chi Town, but we have higher priorities on the list right now, we have things that we need to be taking care of and working on, and there's no doubt that promoting Ho Chi Town is on our to-do list, and, you know, it needs to be something we focus on, but I don't think this is it.
So, procedurally, I'm getting the sense that, that we don't want to.
Is there any more, is there any more discussion?
Just a second, please, I'm giving a discussion. Um, we did approve this last month, I believe, so then what would our, we did not approve it, did we pass on it last month?
No, you, you did not, so what is before you right now is the authorization, uh, to, agreement to proceed forward.
Okay.
And, well, all you did in the previous meeting was, you just said, we have a commitment for the thirty thousand, and we'll look into it, and there was no, there's nothing that's affiliated behind it, and there's nothing binding, and you can step out of it at any time.
Okay.
It was just a commitment so that that way we can move forward.
Commitment to the plans, okay, it's, okay.
So, so that we can move forward with the selection process if we were to select, be selected to move forward, and, and we were selected, and now they want us to sign an authorization form that's, that's now in front of you.
Yeah, so, we just need to make a motion and go from there, so, I'll make a motion that we, we reject the viewpoint project.
Just one motion.
That, that's.
I have a motion from Chad, reject.
I'll second.
Second from Brenda.
Tyler Hager?
Yes.
Ryan Gordon? Todd McDaniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Brandon Walters?
Yes.
Item number five, discussion, consideration, and possible action to approve ordinance number seventeen and ordinance of the mayor and board of trustees of the town of Ho Chi Town, Oklahoma, amending the code of ordinances at Title VII, State Traffic Code, Administration, General Provisions, adding Chapter Seven, All-Terrain Vehicles and Utility Type Vehicles, providing for the operation of all-terrain vehicles and utility-type vehicles within the corporate limits of the town of Ho Chi Town under certain circumstances. To impose restrictions on the use of all-terrain vehicles or utility-type vehicles to establish penalties for violation and to provide an effective date providing for repealer and declaring of emergency. Adam, you wanna elaborate on this a little bit?
Yeah.
Since we discussed it earlier.
Absolutely, so, this ordinance here, I just want to clarify, just right up at the start, is that this does not provide any sort of authorization to drive these vehicles on U S two fifty-nine. U S two fifty-nine is a federally operated highway, it is not a state highway, and so therefore, we cannot put anything onto U S two fifty-nine until there's legislation that is changed at a later date. Um, this ordinance will only allow, uh, actually, you, you cannot even cross U S two fifty-nine if you are on a side-by-side or any of these types of recreational vehicles that are listed in this ordinance. Uh, so, if it were a state highway, then yes, you can cross it perpendicularly, but you cannot go up and down it, you cannot utilize it. So this ordinance is strictly pertaining to our public roads that are located within the town of Ho Chi Town.
And, and that would be just the roads that we've declared public to this point, like that badge that came through, or is this?
That's correct, because we can only have authorization over any roads that are classified as public, and if there are private roads, those are private roadways, so a developer may withhold impediment and not want that. If they may have covenances, that may be an additional layer that do not allow for said type of vehicles inside of their subdivisions, so they will kind of have to, uh, maintain their own areas. So, uh, I, I know that a lot of these, uh, little subdivisions here for S C Rs, they do allow it, and, and some actually don't. Um, so if those vehicles are against a covenant, then, uh, they will have to be asked to leave, and then if they refuse to leave, then obviously now you have a law enforcement issue because you're trespassing, and then you would come in and you would extract that individual.
Thank you.
So Adam, if we pass this, do we have a, um, do we have a, a threshold on as far as when they're allowed to be on the road and when they're not? Are we gonna try to set this up to where at the evening time, there's a?
Yes.
Where I read it.
Item H.
They like, they like.
Sunrise to sunset.
Okay, okay, let's see that.
Yep.
Okay.
I want to clarify, because we got a lot more discussion to do, clarify another one. Somewhere in here, I thought I read it, I'm gonna highlight it, and you mentioned it, you couldn't even cross a federal highway?
No.
But somewhere I thought I read in here, you could go perpendicular to cross.
It's a state highway.
State highway.
Correct.
And two fifty-nine is federal, so you can't even cross it.
Classification is U S two fifty-nine, two five. Yep.
And, and O H P and your local.
They can, and, and will write you a ticket for.
Do the same.
Two fifty-nine A?
Two fifty-nine, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I would say two fifty-nine A is a.
The last two fifty-nine A has been reclassified to S H two fifty-nine, and then you can cross perpendicularly, but you still cannot drive down it or utilize it.
If it's federal.
That's correct.
Yes. Yeah, I mean, we were on the phone this morning with.
And you go private roads versus public roads.
But that's, yeah, I mean, as long as.
That's, that's very common, in private and public stuff, the local roads is.
It's a civil issue if they, if they get into private road matter.
Yeah, and so this, this ordinance is, is, is copied very closely to Broken Bow's ordinance, how they have existing laws and regulations over these types of vehicles.
I mean, in the conversations we had this morning, we, I mean, we wanted to make sure and have clarity on this highway.
Yeah.
You know, take a look at this highway, initially, maybe a state highway, but even though the state maintains it, it's still a federal highway.
Yeah, we really want to kind of make sure that our area is cohesive with laws, that way there's not any ambiguous confusion, well, I could just down the street, but I can't hear, so we really kind of created this based off, heavily based off.
And what we'll have to do, which, sorry, um, what we'll have to do, which I'm assuming we have in place now, as we move in, as we move in the future, and, and have this ordinance in place, we'll need a, um, potentially design a map that shows.
That was my first, that was my next question.
Roads that are legal and what, yeah, that way they know all the individuals that are coming into town from, from various places know, okay, that these roads are.
Yeah, how, how, that would be in the public, where they officially can, cannot ride.
Yeah, we can do like a recreational vehicle.
Yes.
Vehicle. Yeah, that, that actually would not be difficult to have done, and we're very close to getting our website ready for publication and starting to add content to it before it goes live. So, we're very, very, very close with that, so, um, we can reach out to a couple of our mapping resources, uh, the Chalk Town Nation's been very, very, very great to work with in producing maps for us, and we can see about getting an interactive map for the end user, and we can just make it fun and put like a cool little recreational vehicle icon on it, you know.
And, and somehow, some way, somehow, some way, we've got to figure out a way to emphasize, because a lot of times, I think Howard mentioned it this morning, a lot of times individuals won't read, won't read the details, and they'll likely be out on two fifty-nine displays and up and down two fifty-nine thinking it's okay, and so we need to make sure, make it real clear, because it is a safety issue, and, and we want to make sure that they understand that you cannot.
That would be my concern, that we, would they, want to say this, uh, I want to have been contacted by one Ho Chi Town resident over this, that's my opinion. And that one Ho Chi Town resident was in favor of this, and that's the reason he was asking me my opinion of it. You gotta look at what we did twenty years ago when y'all lived here as kids, or y'all lived here as kids, not me, but I did, when I moved up here, I can still ride my four-wheeler up down barditch to two fifty-nine. You can't even get it out of your driveway now. We've got twenty thousand more people here than what we had in two thousand and eleven when I moved up here. But we got to, we got to make sure, you know, a, a few residents, maybe, my, I guess where I'm going with this, do we think this is gonna be something that's going to improve something that the, the tourists that come here, our visitors come here every weekend, is gonna utilize? Just to putt-putt around the neighborhood, because that's basically all they can do. They can't cross two fifty-nine, they can't run up and down it, they can't leave their cabin and go to your place to eat dinner, uh, can't go to the saloon, ride and, um, so, and you're, and do the, is there any homeowner associations in these subdivisions that prohibit it, the developers?
There is.
So, yeah, it's been a while since I drove off subdivision, I know there are a lot of roads that's got no four-wheel signs on it, you know, so, um, my, my concern is how do we, how do we get it out to the public? Here's where you can, and here's where you can't.
And that's what you just said with the maps.
And ju, and just get the maps going.
Yeah, it's, uh, folks, we, we actually get a, a pretty decent, I wouldn't say we're just doorbusters over it, but we get a pretty decent flow of phone calls regularly from visitors to our community saying, hey, do you guys allow recreational vehicles around town, if so, what are your rules? Um, so, it definitely is a thing, and I, I see them very regularly, uh, through the community, and, uh, sometimes I do see them on, on two fifty-nine, and sometimes, and just last summer, I saw a handful that were going up and down the barditches along two fifty-nine, uh, right over there, uh, by the, the mining area, so, um, anyways, yeah, it is, it is something that's used, and, and people do call and inquire about it, and we can have our maps made. Um, and, you know, we can put our, our minds towards some, uh, proper signage that's posted, uh, uh, next to U S two fifty-nine to clarify, hey, none of these types of vehicles on U S two fifty-nine, and so that way you see it, like, let's say you're coming off of Lukfata, and you're kind of like, oh, whoa, whoa, hang on, let's turn around, and let's, let's go back in and take last pine, let's get down to Los Seater that way. Okay, um, so I, I think if, if we can increase that visibility, because again, you know, uh, a lot of people, if they're visiting the community, some people won't call, you know, they'll just bring it along, and just think that it's all right, and they'll just kind of deal with it later. Uh, so if we put the signage up and we make it visible, and then we're doing our due diligence and making the interactive maps as well, and we're taking phone calls, and we make the Facebook announcements and some reminders, I think, I think we've done our job.
I'm, I'm in favor of this as well, and we do get calls through cabin rentals asking, well, they want to know where we can, where, where can we ride them, and then where are trails, both of those things. But, of course, my, one of my concerns is safety, and so if we could take a minute, section seven, seven, three, operation, um, it might be in another area too.
Item E.
Yes, uh-huh, uh, but even before that, the, where does it say, they can't be, oh, forty-five miles an hour, uh, they have, they cannot be operated on the street with a speed limit greater than forty-five miles an hour, which, I don't believe we have that, do we? We don't have to be on this anyway, but, and then, uh, they can't be operated at a speed greater than thirty miles an hour, um, which is good for me. Um, and then, yes, it did get to E, where it says, every all-terrain vehicle or utility vehicle must be equipped with working seat belts for the driver and all passengers. However, if the ATV or utility vehicle does not have working seat belts, the driver and all passengers must wear a helmet approved for operation at the ATV.
So like, for example, this would be the difference between a side-by-side with actual seat belts and, and then, let's say, a golf cart, because I know everybody here is seeing a golf cart here in Ho Chi Town, and the big question is, is how can we, at, at least, at, at, at least in good faith from the town's perspective, enforce good safety protocols whenever they're operating these types of, of vehicles in our town?
I would, I would lean towards requiring seat belts on any vehicle. We did have a golf cart accident here years ago, that I believe might have been a fatality, do you remember? If not, it was a severe injury, so.
Would a helmet have prevented that?
It was.
It was a head injury, it was.
It was a head injury?
It was a fatality, yeah.
So then, I would say we require that the helmets on a, on the golf cart, at least maybe in our ordinance.
So, if, if we were to do that, then it just strikes the last half of E, to say that all all-terrain vehicles must be equipped with working seat belts for the driver and all passenger.
Well, then you're going to.
And that they must be worn, so.
You, you'll, you'll basically class, you'll, you'll remove that whole classification of that type of vehicle, so those golf carts would not, I mean, most golf carts aren't gonna have a, a seatbelt on them.
You can, they go legally street legal, and that's the reason I'm going back to, but you never take a golf cart over forty-eight inches wide, that's a, that's a standard toll, and here it's a minimum of fifty, so.
Oh, I missed that.
Our, our, our would, our, if I adopted this, this would allow golf carts.
The way it's written now.
The way it's written out there.
But my concern is just safety for seat belts, if you guys feel.
How many golf carts have seat belts on them?
None.
Few, few.
If you, if you, you get them street legal, just like an ATV, anything else, to make them street legal, they gotta have a seatbelt on them. Uh, look at the village, look at the village down in Florida, well, that was, that's a community built around golf courses, and, and a lot of street, the village down there, which is what, covers twenty-seven miles or something like that. You can't even drive a car, it's nothing but golf carts, uh, golf carts, so, uh, that's a whole unique different situation.
Todd, do you get that many golf carts in yours?
Uh, not a lot, we get a few, uh, people wanting to drive, um, I don't want to exclude golf carts, because I think a lot, you know, if it was an option, I think people would want to use them.
Yeah.
But I also, I think what we need to look at here is our main goal here is convenience for tourism and residents. What we want to, safety is our biggest concern here, and if someone's out operating unsafe, we've got the rules in place here too. But they're already here, I mean, we can handle that situation. Um, I think that's our biggest concern, is somebody driving too fast, running up down the road, driving reckless.
And with our eighteen-year-old, eighteen, eighteen. And with our eighteen-year-old, eighteen, eighteen, age limit, you're not gonna have. Kids.
You're gonna have fourteen-year-olds running up and down.
Yeah.
The road, which unfortunately, a lot of fourteen-year-olds can drive those really well. Um, mine didn't, and I'm sure Todd, Todd has has his kids, he would say the same, but, um. You know, I I think they they allow some of that in Florida, like, I mean, you were mentioning earlier. They do allow for younger women to drive.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I'm like, Todd, I don't think we can exclude golf carts as long as they meet the criteria.
Yeah.
It is, you have to.
So the question here is not about excluding golf carts, the question here is about requiring seat belts.
If it's street legal, if it's street legal, it has to have a seatbelt.
If it's not, if it's an all-terrain or utility.
Or or if it does not, if it's considered an all-terrain, which is, uh, fifteen inches or less in width, which is what that is, then you would require a helmet to ride it, to drive it.
And seatbelt?
That's the question, do we wanna require seatbelts?
You're looking at, you're looking at seven, seven, three, E?
Yes, yeah.
I I don't know that you wanna require both, because I I believe this is kind of specifically in there to allow golf carts. I mean, the way it's kind of written is to allow such a thing.
Exactly.
And any U UTVs, as far as the, you know, what you get, the side-by-sides of that, they're gonna have seat belts, they they come with those.
That's where the fifty each is.
Okay, okay, no, I see it now.
Uh, I have not heard from my chief.
We actually had an ATV complaint today on Luke Fata trail, two underage boys driving on private properties, and forcing them.
Did, was it Herschel?
This is gonna be a nightmare for you, I don't believe they were, uh.
Or was it Herschel that made the complaint?
No, it was actually the, uh, Bravo cabin.
ATV, so it was a side-by-side or?
Four-wheeler.
Your general thoughts on this topic?
I don't know that the town would have the right to force somebody to install seat belts if it's not original manufacturer equipment.
But then they couldn't ride that vehicle on, then they couldn't use that vehicle.
Qualify.
Yeah.
They wouldn't qualify if we require, I can't force them, but, you know, I can't force them to put it in there. But they, if your vehicle doesn't qualify according to our ordinance, then you can't ride it.
Or you can pay the ticket.
You can pay the ticket and keep riding, you know. If you get, you get found it, I don't know.
Pay it as many times as you want.
Uh. I I I agree with what Todd says, I got mixed emotions here, I agree that that, I think a lot of our tourists come up here to bring a golf cart or. I say four-wheeler, but I'm, does this include four?
This would not.
This is not include four, period. I don't think it, I don't, I don't think it, they comply any shape, form or fashion, but, uh, I think they bring one up here to get in a cabin and run them down the driveway or two or three blocks up and down the road. And and that's their excitement to get out of a twenty-eight-story apartment building in downtown Dallas. I I can't blame them for that, I just, I can't.
I think that's who we wanna make sure we protect, the family who are putting around, looking at things, maybe traveling from one end to the other. We wanna make sure they don't come in here and get a ticket for, or get, you know, a fine or.
And I'm, I'm gonna say this out loud, I've thought about it, as we're bringing on chief and we're getting our squad cars ready to go and they pick up trucks. Don't have cars to pick up support, anyway, uh, summertime, beautiful weather. I would, I would like one of these days to see our police department have one, number one, they're gonna need it sooner or later. Put that on, he saw eight, they, put that on your lip. Uh, have police officers riding the neighborhood, just making themselves exposed to the world, here we are, they're riding their side, riding side to side.
Stunt him on a horse instead.
What I fear, what I, what I fear he's gonna want one of these days, and I'm getting off Sunday, do like our gang warden, Mr. Kenny Lawson. He's got his four-wheeler back his truck, he pulls up, he doesn't even put the ramps down, gee, y'all.
So back to this item, then, so for this discussion, um, you, we all feel that as it's written, that the all-terrain vehicles will have working seat belts and everyone will wear them. Uh, if not, then they will wear a helmet.
Yes.
So that's to say golf carts would be allowed, but everyone riding in that golf cart would have to be wearing a helmet.
Yes.
Unless we wanna put an exclusion to golf carts somehow in there, but I think that's the only way you.
Yeah.
Either that or just a limit, if you don't have a seatbelt, you can't ride it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough call, because how many golf carts do you see?
I don't think you're gonna see that.
With, wearing helmets, you know, and I mean, I wore helmets as a kid, having a motorcycle when I was required to and by my dad. And so, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a safety issue, but it's also, um, it's also better than having to install se- seat belts for, so, you know, okay, I guess then we gotta decide.
How do we, how do we do this? How do we pass it today and do we wait ninety days until we get signages out or do we get maps made? Or do we put this on hold until we can get the right?
This ordinance already has an emergency clause written into it, guy.
You already have, uh, people in your community utilizing these vehicles, as apparently stands, and they would be in violation. What's that? You already have people here using these types of vehicles and, uh, you know, just waiting around and still keeps them in in violation until this is passed. Even if they are being responsible.
Yeah, for safety, for safety purposes, we'd be better to pass this today than to wait.
I agree, so let me ask Chris a question, um, in your professional opinion, do you think we should put a exception in here for golf carts and not require them?
I don't think we should make an exclusion, uh, probably need to check the state statute for golf carts.
Okay.
State statute requires a slow-moving vehicle sign, working headlights, turn signals and signals. So i- if you wanna drive them on a state road or on a road in a municipality, typically, you have to comply with those things and they don't stop.
It's gotta be timed, it's gotta be timed. Edlights, turn signals on.
So we're requiring that already.
It's goes into item I, is what your specifications are.
Yeah.
So however, once again, are those, are those vehicles golf carts?
Yes, you can make a golf cart street legal, got a dozen of them old out of El Cuny Club.
All right, well.
Turn signals, headlights on, brake lights, oh, nine hours. They don't have, when they, if they, every one of them has a windshield, what they don't have is windshield wipers.
Okay.
Windshield wipers is is a, it's a requirement, it's standard equipment on a motor vehicle. You don't wanna be riding golf cart when it's raining anyway, so.
So let me, let me make this clear, and, um, I wanna make sure that I'm, I've got this correct. This would not allow any golf carts unless they are equipped with headlights. And all the other requirements of.
Oh, the same item will be.
On section I.
Okay, it runs the description of all the requirements of that vehicle.
Just reading, I was just reading E and I, but they're all.
Yeah.
They all run together, okay.
It has to be, meet the minimum requirements to be street legal.
Or depr- let me ask you this, Todd, have you seen, um, golf carts that have all these requirements in your neighborhoods?
I have never checked.
Have you, have you, have you seen any? Have you ever seen any?
I've never seen, well.
That's the man.
I've had people.
Have you ever seen any?
Not on the streets, I haven't.
You have, you've seen them?
Yeah, not at all.
Oh, in Ho Chi Town.
I mean, no, but, well, obviously I've seen them, but I've only seen like the morning that had a tag.
Yeah, I've just had it.
Yeah, I've seen golf carts here, I've seen people ride golf carts around now.
Right, I know that.
Whether they're strictly legal or not.
I haven't, that's what I'm saying, I've seen golf carts, but I haven't seen ones that are strictly legal.
But I think that's how you do it, I mean, you can't make everyone happy, you gotta have some rules, and I think if you're not, if you don't meet these requirements.
You know, and traffic's just gonna increase as we move forward and we, we've gotta put these, these, um, in place to protect our.
Well, there's, there's a misconception that it's legal to ride side-by-sides and stuff on the, on the highways.
So, yes.
You can get from the north to the south.
I, uh, clarify one, and and today, uh, I contacted Scott Hamblin, he runs the, the, uh, slingshots down here. Those are, those are classified as a vehicle, not an ATV, not an all-terrain, they are classified as a vehicle with a steering wheel. And they meet all street legal requirements, that's the reason they can ride them up and down the highway. That's the difference, they're classified as a vehicle, not an ATV or a side-by-side or all-terrain vehicle.
So really, you mean, the, the, the dream and vision of seeing side-by-sides and golf carts run up and down two fifty nine is probably never gonna happen?
It would not require legislation.
And that, that's actually kind of frightening for me.
Yeah.
With law trucks.
Well, the the new UTVs too are not the same UTVs we used to ride, they're, they handle like race cars, I mean, they're sophisticated. I mean, if a slingshot is street legal, I see no reason why the new UTVs can't. I mean, so eventually, I think it'll get there.
I think eventually you'll see legislation.
Yes, change, and then we'll be at one step ahead and we'll be ready to go.
And you know, and as we get roads paved and we get thoroughfares potentially north to south, put in on the west side of the highway, I mean, they're.
Yeah, they're gonna have, they're gonna have, you know, uh, safer roads to travel on to and from, so that'll happen as the future progresses. It won't always be dirt.
So I would like to make a motion for, for discussion. To adopt ordinance number seventeen. Need to be read.
I would say.
Yes, I would.
Adopt, adopt ordinance number Z, as as written.
Which is an ordinance of the mayor and the board of trustees of the town of Ho Chi Town, Oklahoma, amending the code of ordinances at title seven. State traffic code, administration, general provisions, adding chapter seven, all-terrain vehicles and utility type vehicles. Providing for the operation of all-terrain vehicles and utility type vehicles within the corporate limits of the town of Ho Chi Town. Under certain circumstances, to impose restrictions on the use of all-terrain vehicles or utility type vehicles. To establish penalties for violation, to provide for an effective date, providing for repealer and declaring an emergency.
I'll second that motion. Fantastic.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Jordan Sartier, Tom Daniel?
Yes.
Chad Sargent?
Yes.
Randall Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Uh, the motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll take it.
Howard Hager?
Yes.
Brian Jordan Sartier, Tom Daniel?
Yes.
Charlie Sargent?
Yes.
Randall Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries, time is three forty-four.
To adjourn.